Okay, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council for Monday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. I'll call the meeting to order. It's two o'clock. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Is there someone to make that motion? Counselor Martin, is there a second or please? Counselor Butler, thank you. All those in favor? Thank you, that was carried. The next item on the agenda is the resolution to resolve into the committee of the whole. And it's someone to make that. Thank you, Counselor Benson, then a second there, Counselor Martin. All those in favor? Thank you, that was carried. So we have a number of delegations today. Welcome everyone. Thanks for being here today. Just a reminder that we have fifteen minutes each to do your presentations, okay? And the first delegation is Erica Quest, who is the Trail and District Chamber of Commerce Executive Director.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Hello, council members and all the guests of this meeting. Thank you so much for for seeing us today. I'd like to start my presentation by adding notes to my reports. As of today, or as of right now, we really haven't set up maybe kind of like a combined understanding as to what councils like us to report on. So I compiled my report on, based on how we report to the Chamber Network and to our membership. I tried to pull some data that in my understanding might be important for your decision-making process. But I feel that this, how we are reporting to the municipalities and regional district, when we are asking for funding, it needs to be reviewed. So we are all on the same page and then we all can speak the same language when it comes to reporting. So thank you for that. So first, I'd just like to speak a little bit about why I'm here. Today, I'm asking the City of Trail for Economic Development Funding, for core funding especially from the City of Trail to support the Trail and District Chamber of Commerce to be able to continue its work. So as you know, the Trail and District Chamber of Commerce is serving the business community of Rossland Warfare Trail Montrose through Trail Areas A and Areas B since nineteen oh one. The significance of a professional network, as you know, cannot be overstated. Regular interactions with peers not only nurture relationships, but also create substantial value for businesses. In the business sector, this principle is particularly vital as collaboration often leads to innovative solutions and community support. Our business community, especially given our region's size, is a robust network. Led by the Chamber, it provides economic stability through individual businesses and enhances the overall well-being of our community. We prioritize the support of existing businesses, and I like to highlight that, that the Chamber's role is to support the existing businesses, fostering stability and success so that you, as an investor, can feel confident in your investment. We facilitate networking events. In two thousand and twenty-four, over three hundred and fifty but close to four hundred businesses were represented at our networking events. Successful business connections translating into increased revenue. And most of all the businesses who participated in our networking events reports back to us that they come because it makes a big difference in their bottom line. And the turnout of these events underscore their value to their busy business people. Otherwise, they won't come. Economic Development Hub, we also serve as an Economic Development Hub. We are a vital source for economic development by sharing valuable information, expertise, and strategies. We normally, each by every year, we submit about seventy policy resolutions to the provincial government. In example, in two thousand and twenty-four, one resolution that we submitted was creating systems to provide adequate childcare spaces to ensure parents, particularly women, have equal opportunities to enter the workforce. And we are currently working in one community initiative that I find very powerful in our community, which is, and it is in alignment with our government focus, is the Greater Trail Early Childhood Coalition. So the Chamber of Commerce plays a pivotal role in maintaining and supporting existing businesses, which is a substantial win for economic development. Retention within our business community is critical for stability, which serves as a cornerstone of success. When business thrives, so does the community. We respectfully request, to be exact, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars in economic development investment for the year of two thousand and twenty-five to ensure that our network can continue to provide ongoing stability and success for the business community of the region. Thank you so much. So that was my presentation, and then I have a couple of reports that I'd like to speak to. So the first one is the annual report, where I like to highlight our vision, is to be an essential resource in our thriving business community. Our mission is that we support and encourage prosperity within our region, one business at a time. Speaking to our core values, our main goals are teamwork and collaboration, accountability, member satisfaction, and diversity and inclusiveness. Our core services, connecting and developing, money-saving, brand-building, advocacy. Key result areas, we are focusing on organizational excellence, member engagement, and community awareness. And how we are achieving this, organizational excellence. We are submitting annual financial statements, which is submitted in your package. Due to the fact that our annual financial statements are not done before June, I submitted two thousand and twenty-four financials and just a financial statement for two thousand and twenty-three, sorry, and just a financial statement for two thousand and twenty-four. I also submitted Certificate of Authorized Signers, Federal Corporate Filing Board of Directors, including Board of Directors, regular board meetings. We have a strategic plan, a three-year strategic plan with annual tactical plan. In regards to member engagement, we have thirty, three hundred and thirty-four active members. We provide newsletters to our members, improve our membership website, search engine optimization. I'm sure you're all familiar with SOE. Business-to-business partnership development, online referrals, event promotion surveys. Currently, we are running a survey to see how we can help our business community in the forefront of, we are in the forefront of the tariffs, right? So this survey is running and will be completed tomorrow. Community awareness. The Chamber is a vital partner to multiple community organizations and in achieving their goals by providing letters of support. We take pride in having provided five letters of support in two thousand and twenty-four. A well-thought-out and strategically planned committee work allows the Chamber to provide impactful perspective for another five community partners in two thousand and twenty-four. Through printed media informing the public about the importance of local spending and the local chamber, we were mentioned and published thirteen articles in Trail Times. Through social media channels, we also build community awareness. And this is a big report which I just sent in today, an attachment. Member engagement values, again, connecting and developing. In two thousand and twenty-four, we have hosted nine Business Factor Business Events and the AGM, which resulted in four hundred businesses in attendance. Money-saving. One of the biggest money-saving that we can offer to businesses, currently seventy businesses taking advantage of it, and using this platform as employee retention, is our Chamber Benefit Package. Approximately five hundred people in this region have access to extended health benefit because of this. And in proxy, over a hundred service providers are benefiting from it. Brand building. I'm highlighting here three events. One is the Kootenay Healthy Living Fair, Kootenay Coffee Festival and Business Excellence Awards. Approximately a hundred and thirty vendors and businesses were taking advantage of this brand-building tool. Advocacy, again, I'd just like to highlight, sometimes it is overlooked that through the Chamber Network, we are, every year, lobbying the provincial government with about seventy policy resolutions to remove rap dings for business, basically. Services that we are providing, the South Kootenay Quest, which we ran for six months last year, were funded by Columbia Basin Trust. That was another thirty-four thousand dollars that we directly brought in back to this community from Columbia Basin Trust. Tourism Campaign, which was funded through FCBC and Destination BC and the Chamber over a few years. That eighty thousand dollars investment was completed in two thousand and twenty-four, and it is ready for the next phase in two thousand and twenty-five. Kootenay Team Chef Club, which normally is funded through the Ready Fund, provides skill development opportunities to hundreds of young entrepreneurs, budding entrepreneurs, I should say. Small Business Rebate, fully funded by the provincial government and delivered by our network. We provided extensive marketing for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four, but no regional report has been provided yet. This is the rebate program where small businesses, if they got any vandalism, unfortunately, then they were able to submit some receipts which then they got refunded for. And I think that's all for my report for two thousand and twenty-four, what we did in a nutshell. And I also have our annual work plan for two thousand and twenty-five. And I was suggested to put "ongoing" next to those items that we just constantly doing because that's what the Chamber does. So teamwork, accountability, member satisfaction, diversity, and inclusiveness. I like to mention that because of this survey that we currently doing to support the business community regarding tariff, one item has came out already where local manufacturers are already looking to partner with the Chamber and they like to see more what the Chamber can do for them. Core services, we do the same things every year, although year to year, we are trying to reach higher levels with it. In example, in March, we are meeting with our MP and with our MLA as well, where we are asking our business community to provide any feedback that we can then move ahead and ask our MP and MLA for answers for the business community. We are also working with the Chamber Network to bring less expensive business insurance into the business community, knowing that doing business in BC is the most expensive throughout Canada and almost in the whole world. So whatever we can, we're trying to bring a little bit of relief to our business community. Again, brand building, we are planning on organizing a Women's Summit, comes November, Kootenay Women's Summit, and as you know, we are actively participating in the BC Winter Games, Clear Ross in two thousand and twenty-six. Core values, we just keep going and getting stronger and stronger as the year goes on. But however, this year, we need to do our next strategic plan, and I like to highlight that the Chamber prides itself to contract this project, once again, to a Chamber expert. So I'm saying this so you understand that your investment is safe with us because we are hiring whenever we can, experts to ensure that the Chamber functions at its highest level in this region. Additional services, we are in the process of hiring a new Chamber team member. Again, meeting with our MLA, I mean, you all understand and know the value of meeting with the business community when it comes to municipal government. And this council is very strong connecting with the small business community. But our job as a Chamber is to bring issues to the government of all level. So that's our next step, to bring all the questions to our MLA and our MP. Again, I'd just like to mention that key performance indicators, as in my report, it might not fully what you're looking for when I'm reporting to you. But this year, one of our goals with Community Futures and SEC DTS as well is to provide you with a partnership or start working on a partnership that can bring a level of reporting to you, which is clearly understood between all partners, so then you can make safe and sound financial decisions how our economic development organizations and landfill should, landfill Jesus, it's not what I'm understanding. Land should be working. And within that, we would like to include key performance indicator to gauge this partner's economic development performance for reporting and decision-making purposes.
Okay, awesome. Sorry, your time's up.
Well, I'm very thirsty. Is there any question?
I was just going to ask counsel if there was any questions or comments for Erica before she... So Erica, I do have a quick comment. Thank you for bringing that forward about, you know, wanting to know what we want to hear and how we want to get presented. I think that's good feedback going forward. I just wanted to ask you, you have a lot going on, and I see in your work plan that you are looking, it says that because of the current workload, you will be applying or, yes, reaching out to FCBC funding for extra staff. So will that be including the one that you're hiring just now or hopefully get this funding for it?
So FCBC funding works in a sense that we could apply and potentially receive funding for a project, not so much as an employee.
Okay, great. And it sounds like you have a lot going on. But quickly, what would be your priority this year? Just give me one of the most important items on your list here that would be a priority, given the lay of the landscape and everything right now.
Yes, so the priority is that we can keep our doors open and we can continue with providing services to the business community. Without ongoing funding, we can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you, Erica. Up next, we have Eric Puckett and the Community Future.
Great.
And Ron Herpoken. Welcome.
Yeah, Ron's co-presenting with me. So thank you, Mayor Jones, City Council, and city staff for inviting us to present today. We've summarized that handout that was included in your package with a couple of quick PowerPoint slides. So today, we're going to report on the successful CED services rendered for the financial support received from the City of Trail last year, I'll be number one. And then we're going to go into our ask for financial support from municipal, i.e. trail-specific initiatives, as well as our ask for financial support from the City of Trail for regional initiatives. And then summarize everything. So first slide, please. And then over to you, Ron.
Okay, in two thousand and twenty-four, the City of Trail provided us with a twelve thousand dollar grant for a hundred and seventy-eight hours of CED activities. So we use software to track the time that we spend on actual initiatives, and it tracks it down to fifteen-minute increments, so I can track time very well. And this is how those funds and those hours were used. So the first item up there is the Downtown Trail Improvement Committee, or DETC for short. So sixty-two and a half hours were spent there, and these hours are mainly attributed to the meetings and minutes we meet for an hour and a half every month, and then, of course, there's minutes and prep. So for those that aren't aware, the goal of the Downtown Trail Improvement Committee is to help revitalize downtown trail, to make trail a better place to do business. We can do this one step at a time, and one step that we took was participating in the Santa Claus parade to bring it back downtown, which I think went over really well with the community. And another example is my next speaking point, which is the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Study. I spent sixty-three and a half hours seeking funding to get this study done. Crime and vandalism were really hurting downtown trail businesses. The DETC identified SEPTED, Crime Prevention, as a proven way to reduce crime. SEPTED is about changing the environment that reduces crime. In this case, the environment is downtown trail. And these sixty-three hours that I mentioned up there were spent applying for grants so we could hire a contractor for the sixty-five thousand dollar study. So in late July, we learned that we were successful. We received sixty-five thousand, one hundred dollars from Community Futures British Columbia, and every last cent of that money went to the contractor. That's what the contract was for. Next slide. So now we have a hundred and sixty-nine and a quarter hours. That was to actually work on the SEPTED study. We started it in August. We commissioned the contractor. We formed an extended Downtown Trail Improvement Committee, or DETC Steering Committee, for the study. We engaged the Simon Fraser University Criminology Professor, and he's working with the contractor right now. We hosted a stakeholder meeting. I think we had about twenty-one or twenty-two participants, and that was nine weeks into the study, so it was quite early, but we wanted to get some stakeholder feedback. We created a social media presence for the study and for, of course, the Downtown Trail Improvement Committee. I think I've done about twenty posts on Facebook Downtown Trail Improvement Committee. Anyways, the contractor has completed Phase One and is now into Phase Two, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about Phase Two shortly. So we'll go on to the next slide. So another one was sixteen and a half hours on wesportfish.com. The Wesport Fish website promotes sport fishing on the Columbia River. Anglers travel to fish and often bring their families. The goal is to attract visitors who stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants, and soften our stores. We provide information on where to fish, how to fish, what to fish for, and other angler information. We also have a whole Beyond the River section where we promote local businesses and things to do for the entire family. There's only sixteen and a half hours because we didn't actually get funding until November for this. But in the last two months, we had two anglers write three new articles, and we've done the associated Facebook posts as well. The difference that made, in November, we had fourteen thousand unique visitors, and in December, we had over twenty-six thousand visitors. Member numbers are still going up. Fishing season is coming, and it's time for them to plan their holidays.
Oh, one, that's it. Are we so summarizing?
Yeah.
Summarizing what we've done with the twelve thousand dollars.
So, yeah, we spent a total of three hundred and eleven and a half hours on CED initiatives. That's just time. So that's twenty-one thousand dollars in CED time and sixty-five thousand, one hundred dollars in grant funding that we leveraged. So in total, that's eighty-six thousand, one hundred dollars in economic development value, and that doesn't include other real costs. It doesn't include our office, doesn't include our meeting space, refreshments, web hosting, accounting, bookkeeping, all of that. So there's other associated costs as well.
So for that twelve thousand dollar investment, there was a seven times leveraged amplification of that investment.
So I think we're on to the next slide?
Yeah. So now we're going to be asking about the requests moving forwards. And that's your story.
So in two thousand and twenty-five, we're seeking continued support for the Downtown Trail Improvement Committee. And much like last year, the way I broke it up, these funds are for our ongoing meetings, expenses, and for the initiatives. DETC works because we collaborate. We have business owners, CE, practitioners, nurse community, liaisons, first responders, and we get feedback from a lot of different people. That's how we find different initiatives to work on. And a lot of what DETC actually does now is guided by this discussion on the ongoing SEPTED study right now. We're learning a lot of new things from it, and we're trying to implement them now. So the next item is the Phase Two of the SEPTED. I said I'd get back to this. We're asking for sixty-eight hundred dollars for that. We need to complete Phase Two of the study. A lot seems since we started the study last August. We originally planned for a December thirty-first and twenty-four completion date, and we learned that the completion date is actually December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. So that means we have a lot more time and can do a lot deeper of a dive into it, go far beyond the original scope of the initiative. Originally, we were, SEPTED is looking at the environment, the environmental design. So we're just looking at the physical environment. But now we can look at second-generation SEPTED principles. It's how we actually create an active downtown. It's how we build community pride. It's community involvement. Active towns have a lot of eyes on the street, and when people are watching you, that helps deter crime. The completed study will also have a lot of action items associated with it, and we're discovering new things every day, and that's why the action items under that part to be determined. The study is not complete, and like I say, we're learning every day, and it's through DETC that we actually do these initiatives, so.
And then the investment documentation.
That's you.
We kindly ask Mayor and council to discuss and determine the scope and budget for this investment attraction content on Trail's website. The content was once fulfilled and delivered by Community Futures, and Ron has expressed interest to put his hand up to offer those services if council decides that it's needed and you've got budget for it.
Well, it's come up a lot of different times, and the question that keeps coming up is what information is available for potential investors? We run a business incubator, as you all, most everyone knows. We've got thirteen cabins downstairs and two upstairs. We employ a lot of people and have business licenses. If someone is researching trail to start a business, what's there for them? In the past, I did a community profile, I did an economic outlook, and I did an economic driver's document for the City of Trail. When investors are thinking of doing business in account, they look at the municipal website and they look at the Chamber of Commerce. Those are the two sources they go to. So I'm just thinking, maybe it's time to look into it.
Okay, we've got five minutes left. We better keep going. Okay, thanks, Ron. The next slide, please. So that was the municipal ask, and this is the regional ask. So our regional ask from the City of Trail is for a total of seventeen thousand, three hundred dollars for four initiatives. The first one is for four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars of seed money to form the South Kootenay Economic Development Alliance. To form the South Cutney Economic Development Alliance. The acronym is S K E T A. And this alliance, this is an alliance of all three local C D practitioners. And local and regional government collaborate and coordinate our regional C D efforts. Late last week, we circulated a white paper on this alliance and we kindly ask you to refer to this paper for more details on S K E T A. But I'll quickly read read the executive summary and background on this white paper. The South Cutney Economic Development Alliance is envisioned as a coordinated effort to enhance regional economic development. C E D. By fostering collaboration among local C D practitioners and local and regional governments. S K E T A aims to leverage local resources, finances and expertise to drive strategic economic initiatives. The white paper outlines S K E T A's proposed structure, objectives and governance. Drawing from existing successful C D models in Castle Guard Nelson. The background, well, the South Cutney region benefits from three established C D organizations with recognized expertise in economic development. They are Community Futures South Cutney. We are mandated by the federal government to deliver C E D. But we receive no funding for that. Uh, the second organization is the Lower Columbia Community Development Team Society, L C C D T S and. L C I C Lower Columbia Initiatives Corp. And the third one is the Trail District Chamber of Commerce. Currently, these three organizations operate independently, each developing separate C D plans, initiatives. And funding applications as we see here today. This fragmented approach can lead to inefficiencies, duplication of efforts. And challenges for new local and regional governments in understanding and supporting various funding requests. S K E T A seeks to address these challenges through a unified collaborative framework. This seed money that we're asking for will be put forward, put towards work in the formation of S K E T A. Which includes creating a collaborative working group, multiple stakeholder meetings, creating a terms of reference and. Memor- memorandums of understanding. We anticipate that we'll take the rest of this calendar year, twelve months, to get S K E T A off the ground. I'd also like to point out that Community Futures C E D Committee supports S K E T A. And the synergy it will create between the C D practitioners and government. The second regional initiative is bizdaap.ca and the E R A P, the Economic Resilience Action Plan. With an ask of thirty five sixty from the city of Trail. Over to you, Ron.
Okay, so um. Bizdaap, that's the Business Disaster Action Plan website and home for the Economic Resilience Action Plan or E R A P. Um, all five local communities, uh municipalities and villages linked to the website. Um, currently, we have a contractor doing a major update to the regional to the E R A P. And once that's completed, it needs to be converted into a web document. Uh, what ends up happening, it was when an economic event occurs, the action groups stand up. Uh, the members go to the website, they find their quick start checklist and all the contact information for all the members in their group. So it's just a way to, when a disaster occurs, it's where you go. We also have information for local businesses as well. Um, and we're seeking funding to pay for the associated costs and expenses of the updates. Um, Eric.
And then we've also discovered. We've got this wonderful plan, but we've discovered that businesses are not engaging in disaster planning in our region. As they should be. Uh, to solve this, we'd like to deliver five workshops for businesses to encourage and equip them with the tools to develop their resilience. Action plans. Our plan is to deliver one workshop in each of our five communities. The third initiative is an investment of twelve thousand dollars for having the South Cutney represented on ImagineCutney.com. Which is an established resident business and investment attraction website. The city of Trails portion in this cost is four thousand eight hundred dollars. And the fourth is over to you, Ron.
Okay, that's back for the we sport fish. Um. The website is a great tourism asset. We need to keep it fresh with new content and social media posts. We also need to pay for, there's a website assurance that you probably saw on there. What that is, it's a guarantee from our web developer to keep the site uh up to date and functional. And it also gives us uh twelve hours throughout the year if we want to make any changes to it. Um, it's really trails only. Tourism asset website that we have right now. Uh, just we need to keep it live, we need to keep it fresh. It does bring visitors in. And I know people have moved here because of the Columbia River and sport fishing.
Okay, thanks. The last slide in summary. So we're done. Yes. So in summary, the combined total ask for financial support. From the city of Trail is twenty eight thousand three hundred dollars plus whatever council decides. Should be spent on investment content on the city of Trails website. And that concludes our presentation. A minute for fifteen over. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you very much, you guys. Um, any questions or comments from council? Go ahead, Council.
So the regional ask that is that is regarding the other uh local governments being part of that ask as well? You'll be going to them independently and asking for their share?
Correct. We've already been presented to the East and.
And S K E T A, Community Futures and the L C C D D T S. Have they already kind of committed to collaborate on that kind of initiative?
We've had discussions with the prior directors and also with Erica and everyone supports this concept. It's just a matter of now putting our heads together to see how we make it work and tailor fit it for our region.
And I see you're looking at committee members. There's a total of, when I calculate it up, you got two from Ryanville at it all. There's twelve elected officials. Plus you'll have representatives from Community Futures, L C C D D T S and the Chamber. Uh, what what role will the elected official have? What do you see as that? Are they going to be part of planning and budgeting?
I I think it's the first step would be strategic development, like what are we doing? What is going to serve this region and and our respective communities um properly and. Um, having input from each local and regional government is key.
So we're through the chair. I guess I I might have reached a protocol here. Uh, are these good, I guess, because there's already a considerable amount of representation of the L C C. D S, D T S as well. So uh there won't be duplication, I would imagine, because these will be the same participants in both or how does that work, you know?
The goal is to streamline this and to avoid duplication at all costs. And and this is, this is just a working document.
Yeah.
There might be a better.
No, I like it. That's why I'm asking. I like the concept. And will it mean, uh, through the chair, will it mean having one? Representation for for funding instead of three?
Exactly. One. And and we've we've drawn from the models in Castle Guard and in Nelson and uh. You know, everyone's invited to compare their successes and their weaknesses so that we develop the right thing for our region.
Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, it's uh, yeah. Counsel, does counsel have any more questions? Okay, okay. Thank you guys so much. Oh, go ahead, Counsel Martin.
Right, yeah, that's sorry.
Concepts with all three groups in one, that's new to the L C D T S as we know. I got that on Friday afternoon. And whatever was discussed wasn't discussed with the board of directors for the L C D T S. So as of right now, I'm not saying that we are in on that like. I've got no just, no ability to say that. So.
Thank you.
Don't assume anything quite yet because we haven't, we haven't uh looked at it. We got it on Friday. I got it on Friday and our board hasn't seen that. So I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay.
We're starting it. We're starting this discussion. Well, I just want to say it may be.
One more question?
Yes, it may be premature to ask for funding that until we know all three are on board.
I would suggest.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Thank you, Mergo.
Okay, okay. Uh, thank you guys for coming uh today and for all that information. Uh, we are moving on to the L C C D T S and thank you guys for any of the things today. I mean, that's your crew. Um, I'll pass it over to you.
Great. Okay, my name's Brent Danhill. This is Dan Ashman, Pete Stamper and.
Okay.
Leo.
And Leo. Okay. Um. Right on. Thank you. I would like to start by acknowledging two of our board members for being present in the King, King Charles the Third Coronation Medals, Pete Stamper and Dan Ashman. These uh, this recognizes the outstanding contributions made to our great nation by these individuals. So, thanks, fellas. After a week of productive discussions with our local MP, Rob Morrison, who has expressed full support for designating our area as the Battery Hub of Western Canada. Along with our MLA Steve Morissette, who highlighted our success and initiatives at the House of Commons last week. And uh, the MP candidate for the other riding, Herb Alex. Is totally aligned with your neighboring mayors with support of the low level crossing. So now we turn to the city of Trail. Uh, with momentum growing at the provincial and federal levels, this is a critical moment for municipal leadership and to step forward. So unfortunately, our board member Thompson Hickey, who took over for our uh uh executive directors after they left. Um, unfortunately, he's not going to be able to be here because of a family tragedy. Um, but he's continued to advance our interests with key groups despite our current staffing challenges. So he's given me his report from Friday that I'd like to share with you of what's going on with the L C D T S. So last week, he met with the key people at the U V C O Battery Innovation Center, the Director of Innovative Clean Energy Fund. B C Ministry of Energy Mines and Low uh Low Carbon Innovation Chair. Uh, the Scientific Director, the Battery Innovation for the Battery Innovation Center and Associate Professor at the U V C. As well as the product, project manager at the Battery Innovation Center. And that's also the vice chair. They fully support the Western Canadian Battery Hub being in the Lower Columbia area. And look to the region to focus on recycling to augment U V C O's research capabilities. And Thompson will be joining the advisory committee for the U V C O Battery Innovation Center and his next meeting is in May. Uh, as far as the Battery Hub and R and D facility, he met with uh Dawn at the Phoenix Advanced Materials. And given their current business and capabilities, they are best positioned to launch an R and D facility to the Battery Hub concept. R and D activities could include making and testing anode materials and researching recycling options. So he's looking for about four thousand square feet, square feet of space. And Thompson toured a potential space within the trail. And then will he'll uh, they'll review again in March. So spinoffs from the Battery Hub concept offer potential significant growth for the area and it could include light manufacturing. Um, he also met with uh B C Critical Minerals Office. And their mandate is to ensure that B C and federal governments work closely on critical minerals. They have read the battery feasibility study and the Critical Minerals Office supports specific projects and focus on making external markets are aware that B C is open for business. Um, when related to uh critical minerals. So Thompson reinforced the current performance and potential of the Lower Columbia. Related to critical minerals and our industrial friendly environment and capabilities. So they'll stay in contact. So say critical minerals this many times. Uh, one other meeting that he had was with uh the B C Ministry for Jobs, Economic Recovery and Innovation, J D I. Um, regarding Metal Tech Alley, they're interested in Metal Tech Alley and look to support projects within economic development funding. Uh, they reviewed the Battery Hub concept and will also be in contact and have further details. On the other side of us is we do some, after the amalgamation, is we've got more going on with community. So our community health center, um, they have the startup and operational funding for the trail community health center. We space in a medical building and they look to start on June first. Um, and that that's to target those without a family doctor. The affordable housing concept is basically full in Rosland Yards. Fruit Bill should be completed in September, Lizard Mountain it's called. And uh, the trail bill is working as well and expected construction to start in September. Another initiative that we've got now with the amalgamation is the Incredible Farmer's Market. And did you know that that's um, that Farmer's Market out of that? Full foot trailer has done almost a million dollars worth of economic, economics through uh the area over the past year. So we're all excited to work with her. She's um fresh energy and we look, the the board looks forward to working with her. Uh, seasonal markets and fruit sale and Winnie de Palazzo, where a huge success. Uh, the B C Farmer's Market coupon program, we're very positive. And um, yeah, so that's exciting as well. So the next thing that we'd like to talk to is I'd just like to bring some of our members to the front. And to speak about how the L C C D T S, the impact that we have in the area. So maybe if we could start with Matt and go from there.
Good afternoon. Um, I'll be, I'll be really brief because we've talked about this a few times. Um. I'm extremely excited to be a part of this board. Um, most importantly, because of the regional impacts that you have in public management highlighted through the. The Farmer's Market. I'll be honest with you, coming back to this area, I had no idea the economic generation and revenue that was coming from that Farmer's Market from, I remember. That its very first infancy to what it is today. And uh, that's pretty substantial. And the person that um is leading that, uh, who does meet with the board on a frequency is. Uh, full of fresh ideas and and it's that kind of intensity and um and willingness to support the region. Um, which of course does happen uh throughout the region. It's it's one of the reasons why I I feel quite strongly about this. Uh, the other is just, we, the board and members of the other combined entity now. Are very focused on, but I'd say true uh successive path of economic growth with the region. And that doesn't diminish any of the other work that's going on. Um, but you can clearly see there's a, there's a common theme here around critical minerals. There's a strategic tie within the area around critical minerals over and above what is um, you know, mine employer, which I will not speak of. But the um. Uh, that tie and that effort, uh, it's a sizable opportunity for this region. It will be driven primarily through the efforts of those that are actively involved. In what was formerly the two, the L C I C and which is now the combined entity as well.
Hi, Chair. Thanks, Matt. I'm Pete Stamper from K C Recycling. I'm one of the owners and the CEO there. We employ about seventy people from the local communities, one of the larger employers in the area. We purchased the company eight years ago and we've grown it from thirty three thousand tons per year recycling to fifty thousand tons. Uh, I think one thing I've realized lately is people didn't realize we're the only place that batteries get recycled. For thousand, two thousand kilometers. So it's not just a local recycling center. We are the place that batteries from Portland to Winnipeg come to be recycled. Um, so we've experienced that growth and we plan to go, go to double that to over eighty thousand tons. Along the way, we built a plastic recycling plant, we built a trucking company, we built a rail transload facility. And we've never paid a dividend to any of those owners. I've never even gotten a bonus. We put every dollar we made back into the business because we. We bought, that's why we bought it, was to grow. How how does this relate to economic development? As a lead processor, public opinion. Matters a lot. So does government matters a lot. We are only able to do what we do as long as we stay in good graces with them. And the L C I C has played a tremendous role in that. So to an outsider, trail is a tale of two cities. Right? On the one hand, trail is an unfortunate contaminated community with historic problems with lead. But some people know. On the other hand, we are the solution for the future. Using battery metals and jobs for circular economy. Rob Morrison called us the Western Canadian Battery Hub. So which are. Right? And that's what Metal Tech Alley, Western Canadian Battery Hub, the L C I C, that's what. What they did is turned it into the second option. And they brought people here and told them that story. We we created that vision for the region. And as a result of it, uh, K C Recycling's gotten a huge benefit. So we've actually gotten four grants from provincial agencies worth millions of dollars. Uh, matching all of our investments and we're continuing to get that support, continuing to get access to the people that can. Can drive the public policy to drive growth in this area. Without Metal Tech Alley, without the L C I C. It seems very self-serving for me and my colleagues to go to Parliament or whatever and tell our story. But in, you know, doing that in partnership with Economic Development Agency or in fact, having Economic Development Agency leading that. Lends a lot of credibility that it's not just me trying to drive profits for my shareholders. It's all of us acting together. And that's gotten us access and and a high profile throughout Canada. Thank you.
Dan Ashman?
Came here about forty years ago and uh three dollars eighty five cents when I arrived in Trail and uh. Managed to uh build a company, do forty million in sales and uh. Top of the afternoon, how are you, by the way? And uh, it's um, it's been a real journey because I've always been involved with economic development. I was on economic development when Mark, Mark Holland was the mayor. That goes back, you know, a good thirty five years ago. And it's been a great journey for me. I just love the area, love the the, what we do. And and there's always been the uh. Uh, you know, synchroces of five small communities fighting over things. It's always been there, but you know, this uh, the L C I C concept and the L C D D concept. Really helping US communities together. But you know, this, the LCIC concept and the LCDD concept is really helping these US communities together. So we have a, an outstanding team. We're, we're doing a lot of different things. And possibly, I understand the problems facing City Hall when it comes to fiscal. You know, what do you do? What do you support? Well, you have to support really all three of us. And I think, you know, we should be looking at doing what we're doing and coming back to council before the end of March and come back with a little bit of a cohesive plan on how that money should be shared. I think that there's all, all, all three groups have a great project potential. And I think it's important for the City of Trail not to look at cutting money. If anything, look at increasing it a little bit. There's two ways to make money in business, increase sales or cut costs. And you can increase sales by marketing and by nurturing and having all these volunteers. Because when you talk about salaries for staff, that's one thing. When you talk about the salaries of four CEOs that are sitting at this end of the table, you know, we, we have a lot of employees, we, we do a lot. And if anybody wants something for this area in the city of Trail, it's us. And we want you to be hopefully cognizant of the fact that the spending needs to continue. It should be in the same place for 2025, as far as I'm concerned. You shouldn't be looking at cutbacks. You know, LCIC and LCDD, the combination of those, you know, is a positive thing. Because there was always misunderstandings about the two groups. So now it's coming to one consistent group. And now we can do more good work together with all of those volunteers. And I mean, a lot of those volunteers make a hundred, $150,000 a year and work for nothing for the board. And we're not, we're not a paid staff. And I think that the City of Trail would be making a mistake to even consider remotely trying to roll back some of their investment in economic development. If not, you know, even consider increasing it 10 or 15%. This is the time to go. This is not the time to stop. On that, in, in the case of the mayors, Colleen, you know, unfortunately you had another commitment for the meeting. But I'd ask Mr. Martin, could you get your feel from the Senates, for example, about this project? Basically Herb is basically the spokesperson for Canada for the Senates. And he reports to Koi Dasho, Call of the Confederated Tribes.
Sorry Dan, you know what? I'm sorry. We're really on a tight, a tight timeline here. So I'm not sure what meeting you're talking about with Herb. I'm not sure.
The meeting that you couldn't make, remember you were scheduled, well, whatever happened, you had a conflict with your meeting. So that's why I was going to ask Mr. Martin, who was there for the whole meeting, when Herb was speaking. And this, this is relative to the one E to Crossing.
Okay, okay. So just to move it along here a bit, sorry, I don't need to interrupt, but do you have more speakers? Because we are really getting close to the timeline here. We've got like three, four minutes.
No, that's all. We can be, if that's all, that's all.
So but what is your proposal that you're bringing forward today?
Well, we, our proposal wouldn't change from last year, from 2024. So 2024 was, we got that completed, that budget, not that budget, but that contract. And all we want is the same contract for 2025.
So and can I also ask you, based on if there was the ability to give you that money, what would be your priority next for 2025, looking at the landscape of the, what's happening out there right now?
Well, the Western Canadian Battery Hub is just waiting for us to get the signs made and put on this side of the highway. Like that's wanted by the Canadian, like the Canadian government. That's like, it's right through. So, you know, we can, let's order signs and get things rolling for that. That's the, that's top of the, top of the heap and ready to go.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open it up to council now for any questions or comments. Go ahead, Councilor.
Through the chair, thanks. Friend, just wondering, you had, unfortunately had a couple of folks resign and you were in the process of trying to hire smaller people. How are you making out?
Well, that's looking great, actually. It closes on February 28th of Friday. So if you know anyone who might be interested, we're still getting, we still got another great application today. So that closes on the 28th. And then the HR committee is ready to start interviews like Monday. And we're ready, like, we'll have someone in place really soon.
Thank you.
Councilor Cashel.
Yeah, on that, there was a two senior members, Yefemi Von Tonder left after eight years and Rebecca Rich, Rich left after six in the same year. For me personally, it raised a couple of big red flags. I guess my first question, I'll be touching on what Councilor Martin says, is what measures are you going to be taking to retain staff over the long term?
Well, that, that was a bit of a challenge and that challenge didn't really come from our board. That was like, I'll put it, I've got, our team is, let me put the statement that I made here. Our team is dedicated to long-term solutions, creating stability and strengthening this community. And it's difficult to establish that credibility when it took us this, that long. It took us 18 months to get our last contract done for the City of Trail. So that was, that, that's a challenge and it makes for uncertainty. So we would love that if the first job, the job number one for our new executive director that we should have within the next couple of weeks would be signing our contract with the City of Trail. Because, well, that's it.
I, I just add to that, I worked quite closely over the last couple of years with, as not just on the board, but, you know, they helped a lot with things we were doing at KC Recycling. And both of them, you know, really suffered from financial uncertainty as a result of, you know, we sit at the board and talk about what are we going to do if we don't get the, the money next month or whatever like that. Month after month after month, took a toll on them and they both decided to do something else.
And if I could add to that, because I talked to them too and just call it straight, it was you know, go to the City of Trail to break the check. Simple as that. So it was our fault. No, no, I just, the inability, I, I don't know if it's our fault. I'm not saying it's a fault. It was an inability for, that was why I chose that word, for some reason. We don't know what the reason is.
Did you want to speak on that?
Oh, I can. Just a complete and utter lack of responsibility from your board or your staff to communicate with us to even create the contract. I ended up having to create the contract that you guys are supposed to be doing. And you lost a bunch of staff, no one gets back to us. It's pretty disappointing that you would come here and kind of pointed to here at the City of Trail. You have lost two employees, you've got almost $300,000 between the RDKB and the City of Trail. And you're coming back asking for more money and yet there's no explanation of what happened with the money you currently had from us. We gave quarterly funding to LCIC on a regular basis. So we're not really sure what someone's talking about not cutting a check. So I've been very careful in how you're approaching myself and more council here on how this ruled out today.
Well, I hear what you're saying, Colin. But they did start those negotiations, negotiations in August of 2023. And then there were contracts sent out by our staff. And then we got our, the version 2024, we got in December. And we don't mean to upset you this much, but it's been a challenge for our, for our volunteer board to deal with what's gone on with that, with, with these, with the staff leaving. So that, we handled it as soon as we got your, your contract in December 2024 and turned around and gave it back to you the same, you know, within 24 hours.
The point being that it really wasn't the city that was supposed to create the contract, right?
It was, the executive directors did send contracts over those months. No, absolutely.
Okay.
I have to do a few more questions through the chair. I'd like to just, for my own benefit, there's a lot of moving parts here with the LCC DTS. And it's taken me over two years to even come close to figuring out where all your tentacles go. So I just want to talk and ask, and for the benefit of any of our constituents, taxpayers who may be watching, key initiatives, the Lower Columbia Community Health Center. So my question will be, before I do it, I want to preface something first, if I may be permitted. The Lower Columbia Community Health Center Society, this is from the British Columbia World Health Network. And I won't read this, but it gives credit to an initiative started by this particular group. The Chair of that group was Wynne Mott. And there's also press on that from Trail time. So my point is, it looks like the Lower Columbia Community Health Center Society is taking credit for bringing the Lower Columbia Community Health Center to Trail. So my question to you is, how does the LCC DTS fit into that?
That's part of the amalgamation and I'd have to get back to you with that because that's how it goes with the, the group. LC, I was a member of the LCIC and then we amalgamated. So the LCDTS initiatives like that are coming, are still news to us, like new to us. So I can get back to you shortly.
Councilor Cashel, I know you've got a list of questions.
I got not a list, just a couple.
Okay, okay. Go ahead. I think that Councilor Benson is wanting to ask a question as well. No, no, go ahead.
No, I'm not here to, I would encourage.
Which I think was, I went to their meeting, their AGM, Claire Jones, and it was from their Health and Hospital Committee that you was part of there.
Yeah, that's, there's, there is that connection. But basically, it seemed like a lot of the work was done by the Lower Columbia Community Health Center Society. So thank you. And I just want to move on to the other initiative. The Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Society resulting in the building of affordable housing. And you've already alluded to that in your presentation. Again, much credit is given to the Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Association, Jan Morton, of course, is Executive Director. Now, I realize in 2013, that Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Association was sort of birthed out of the LCC DTS. So I can see the connection 12 years ago. But as it stands now, the Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Association is a standalone nonprofit organization that has done work in Roslyn, does work in Fruitvale. It's done our Columbia House over here on, and we've just given them $15,000 last August. So again, help me connect the dots to how the LCC, I gotta keep going here, I can't remember your name, DTS. How are you taking credit for that, for the housing initiatives? When it's already been given credit to the Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Association?
Well, taking credit, I'm just talking about the things that we've done. So the work.
How have you done it, sir, is what I'm asking. Like what did you do? What, what participation did the LCC DTS have in bringing, you know, any housing to the area? Like what was your, what was your involvement? When it's clearly fell on the Lower Columbia Affordable Housing Association, they've been doing it in partnership with Columbia Basin Trust, BC Housing and Respect of Municipalities. So again, I'm just trying to connect the dots. If you can help me with that, it would be greatly appreciated.
I don't have the exact answer for you because that's an initiative that was from before my time in this group. But I'd love to talk to Bill or Morag about that and bring it.
Considered by Bill and Mor, in the amalgamation, but they'll have to explain it.
Okay, thank you. And through the chair.
Yes.
The LCC DTS membership includes representatives of government. How do you plan to incorporate their input into activities of the LCC DTS?
Bill's got another meeting scheduled for the next month or so. And then that's where that's going to go. Again, this is all part of the amalgamation process. So we've been doing an awful lot, volunteers, like I said. So I wish I had more answers for you, but I don't. But I can get them for you and return them then.
And you mentioned, you already touched on this too, to the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Metal Tech Alley made noted developments, you've already alluded to that. And now with Yefemi Von Tonder gone, how do you plan to maintain that momentum?
Well, the executive director that we're about to hire.
Okay. And now that the LCC DTS has merged with the LCIC, which was a good move, I believe, going forward, what changes to services are, can we expect and until what are they?
Well, changes, I think we'll get more, we'll have a better communication strategy soon. We'll have more effective, we'll just be more effective throughout the process. Communications, I believe, is where it starts because that's why we're feeling like, that's why we're communicating you, you and me like this, is because of the lack of communication in our, in our groups.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Benson, did you have a question?
And it was one of, it was, that's about how the amalgamation was going and what, what benefits you see and how, how.
It's a lot of work. It was a, it's an awful lot of work. And not having staff didn't make it any easier. So, yeah. Any questions you have that I may not have for you, answers for, just send them to us and we'll get back to you soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for being here today and congratulations again. That's an honorable medal to receive. I did a little bit of research on that. And that's, thank you for the work that you're bringing here and I know you're going to continue in this area. So we're receiving all of these for information today. We're not making any decisions. So I appreciate you taking the time to come and present. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Wilson.
Usually the delegates sit back there, you know, and then they come up accordingly.
Okay, so we're going to continue on because we are running a little bit behind here. So I'd just like to welcome Samah Murphy from the Philister Public Library. And thank you for being here today. Yeah, I'm here today with my new board chair, Martha Wilson. Everybody knows Jeff Jones, he was timing us from the library board, the library acting. He'll only be on the board for eight years. And Jeff, eight years is coming up in December. So he will be in a supportive role until then. So yeah, I'm looking to have Mark here with me today. So we are here today just to review, if anyone has any questions about my last hour here for you guys. And also full budget. I just wanted to start off by noting that you guys have priorities. I was really excited to see that. And we're actually in our next board meeting, going to be reviewing those as a board. Because they want to make sure that, yeah, we're supporting the good, anyway, we can, to achieve your goal. We can video too. Yes, I saw that. So the first part of my report, normally I do a quarterly report because it's the end of the year. I gave you guys a summary, this question here of just some annual steps because we're always quite impressive with the busy little building we have. Even this morning, when we'd only been open for an hour and just about every seat in that building had been taken and there was 26 people in our children's program this morning. So wow, yeah, it's a, it's a very busy place in terms of physical circulation. So our physical collections, our things like our books, our DVDs, things like that. We had almost 63,000 items get checked out last year. We offered 705 programs to almost 9,500 people. And we gave, once a month, we offer services to our hometown patrons. So we checked out 457 items. So this statistics of the library average, it should sit at Riverfront Center average. Because we know approximately 10% of that number is the VIC as well as the museum. So yeah, almost 80,000 people this year. So we think we can, will be over 80 in 2025. We had almost 7,000 holds placed and. Okay, thank you. Computer workstation, so that's people that don't have access to the internet or, which we always think underestimate how the importance of being able to access the internet. We had almost 8,000 people interested to use our public computer system. 57, 100 people accessed our website. Um, fifty seven, a hundred people accessed our website. We had four hundred and sixty nine people, uh, registered for new library cards. And electronic circulation is actually about thirty three percent. Over last year, we've seen a thirty percent increase the last two years in a row to over twenty five, um, thousand items. With some big statistics for our little library. Was there any other questions about the rest of my report? I don't want to go through it all with you guys because you guys will have the opportunity to read it. Um, it just essentially summarizes.
I just, I just love the appearance of the report together, so you need to read, um, just thank you, it's, it's my favorite report.
Okay, well, um, I know not everyone has the opportunity to read everything, so I thought I'd put that dashboard, um, makes it a little bit easier, hopefully. But, um, yeah, thank you.
Could I ask you a question about the budget?
Yes. The twenty twenty four?
Yes.
Yes, I can talk about that next, yeah.
Well, I'm just wondering about the Village of Warfield, it's up a hundred and seven percent. There's a.
Um, so there is, Colin can probably speak to this, there's a formula that's used to calculate how much library, like money the library gets. So I just underestimated what that percentage would mean.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And also most of our, maybe you can talk about the interest rate, how come it's like.
Also, that was me as well. Um, I didn't anticipate interest rates being so high. So the money, um, we had that big enhancement grant money that, um, ended up, we didn't spend it all and it's, there's, so there was a lot of more interest there than I was anticipating.
Okay.
And this year I consulted with Colin about those numbers, so there should be more in line.
And I noticed, um, out at the mall, that space you have out there is constantly busy.
Yeah, so.
It's doing so well.
We had, um, for the few months we were programming out there, we had over a thousand people attend programs out there. Um, it's a very accessible space and there's also lots of parking.
Yes, yes, that's true.
Yeah, we've been very fortunate, um, for the Village of Warfield as well, it's one of their contributions to that program.
And the seniors yoga?
Yeah, we don't.
The cherry yoga. Every time you walk by, it's full, all the terraces are full, it's kind of funny. Um, I think it's a great report.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do and I'm glad to see that we've got a full library board and we're gonna miss go.
And the board did all offer to actually be here today.
Oh.
Which, um, I think having Mark here, um, to show support is enough, but, um, they are willing to come anytime you guys would like to. To share with them. Um, so rolling along, um, I concluded my, uh, year end, but it does not really a lot there uh, to note, except for the fact we did have some staffing challenges, um, that we weren't anticipating. Um, and then you can see in the bottom, we did have a deficit, um, because of those additional personnel expenses. Um, and we did have a corporate surplus to cover that. So that's it, I will just operate to my proposed budget. Um, so it's, can it be done? Okay, can it there? Um, so essentially this is the budget that, um, passed by the board, uh, last week. But I'm just here today, it's that first requisition line, um, that's the amount of money that, um, the City of Truck gets the library in order for us to operate. It's exactly the same as with the last two years with the addition of five percent to cover our Q B. Um, that lift, we're keeping, for our Q B players who are lucky enough to have Tracy Butler come and, um, sit at the bargaining table with us. So our, um, yeah, our lift is actually the same as the B and A. Um, other than that, it is, um, the same as has been in the country.
Nope, okay. Okay, if there's no other questions for Samantha, then we will, thank you for being here, both of you. Good to see you.
That Nick Cashill is still on your.
Yes, well, he was last year.
Yes, at the end of two thousand twenty four, so we are lucky to have Mr. Butler and he is missed already, huh?
Thank you, yeah, Counselor Butler, for taking that. It looks like you guys are managing without me quite nicely, so happy to see that.
It's working, it's working.
Um, yeah, I feel like I have a good relationship with everyone here and I trust.
So you're welcome to stay if you want to listen to the rest of the staff reports, um, but don't feel like you have to, okay?
I love it when I'm part of this organization where they say you can leave. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for showing up. Thanks, Ms. Murphy.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our departmental verbal updates. And first up, we have public works. Purchasing and the chemical manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council and city staff. Let me keep it brief, uh, I, I obviously wasn't here in January with you all, but, uh, really, um, guess the best thing that I can report on right now is a, is a downward trend over the past three years on our fuel costs. Uh, which is sort of exciting after, uh, COVID, post-COVID, where we saw a huge spike in our fuel costs. Um, this is no, um, no management magic here, it's just a matter of the winter that we've had, so regardless, we'll take a win where we can get it. But it's a pretty significant downward trend, which is helpful. Every bit of money that we don't spend there, we can reallocate and spend somewhere else at Public Works or on the fleet. So, um, significant trends, we're talking about, uh, sort of over a three-year trend, we've seen, uh, um, over thirty thousand dollar reduction in fuel costs. Now again, units are sitting, um, which means we're just not burning through the fuel the way we do, uh, we have all units rolling. But, uh, we, we've also, um, had considerably less downtime, about forty four percent less downtime than we did in the previous, um, winter. So, again, if we're not outworking the equipment, it's not getting broken, so, but that's one of our, uh, one of my performance indicators for, for what we like to do in our group, so. Um, parts and labor trending pretty well the same. We had a slight dip. Parts and labor cost went down, um, in twenty three, twenty four, in the winter. So I was just using, um, December through February kind of as the target time to look at. But we are basically on track, um, in twenty four, twenty five, what we've looked at at twenty two, twenty three. So I'll just add that, like, though we have not been, um, running the equipment the same way we've been rebuilding some of the older gear. So that stuff, you know, becomes, it's, it's to be costly. Uh, we have some, um, challenges with personnel, with, um, our lead mechanic is also now the Q P president. So he's away two days a week typically, sometimes more. So we tend to, um, we're contracting some work out a little bit differently, at a different volume or level than we did in the past, so. There's some cost savings there that the outside contractors do work in a different way than we do. Um, they have a little bit more capacity than we have, but, um, their overall hourly rate is higher than ours. So I think it kind of levels off, but at times we can push and do a little bit more work with outside help, so. Um, my last piece, I just wanted to say, uh, I, I, we had some, a training opportunity out in Cowesagar. Um, recently, in the last, uh, um, week. So we sent three staff out to take their intermediate first aid. Um, it was an offer that was made to us by the, um, City of Cowesagar to put it all together. Um, somewhat similar to the training opportunities that we provided in the past that have included Roslyn and Warfield and Fruitvale. Um, we continue to look to partner with, um, other local municipalities in twenty twenty five with training opportunities. So it's a great, um, option to have, to be able to send people to training that's going on locally. Where we don't have to absorb all of the cost ourselves, but also a great way to build that network with our other local municipalities, so. Uh, we'll definitely be looking to include others in our training program here in twenty twenty five, so. And that's all I have for today. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody would have.
Any questions, Council?
No.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it. See you next month.
Uh, okay, on to engineering.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship, thank you, Members of Council.
Thank you.
Having some regrets from other managers, our grounds and roads manager and facilities maintenance manager can't make it today. Um, so I'm just gonna speak on their behalf with a couple of items they want to update you on. Um, in terms of grounds and roads, um, since our last beating, there wasn't snow. Um, so we did receive around seven inches of snow on January thirty first. Um, so in that time and around the first week, um, there was a lot of time cleaning up from that initial storm. Um, that would have, um, taken, um, curving, widening, pushing back cul-de-sacs, dead ends, all of that, um, type of activity. Um, in the week that followed, um, we activated our snow removal operations, which are a little bit more systematic. Um, and those are completed on our collector roads, um, so kind of major conduit throughout the city. Um, some examples would have been, um, Second Avenue, uh, both the gyro side and also the Safeway side. Um, of that, um, strip of land. Um, also, we did Glover Road, um, Benz, Lawson Avenue and Old Lawson Avenue, um, and a couple of other, um, sections as we had time. Uh, last week, grounds and roads focused on, um, clearing catch basins. Um, so we, uh, had received word that, um, through forecasting, um, we were anticipating a lot of rain over the weekend. Um, and with that large snowfall prior, um, and that deep freeze, um, there's a, actually in the curb line, you know, two to three inch, um, layer of ice on top of, um, the curb and gutter system. Um, which could impact, uh, catch basins, so, um, once we received, uh, the forecasts on those weather events. Um, the crew went out to try and clear those catch basins of ice and standing snow to make sure they ran clear through the weekend. And, uh, as, as, although we didn't receive as much rain as we anticipated, um, there were no calls or anything like that through the weekend for, um, in the low lying areas especially. Um, that's all I have for the grounds and roads portion, um, in terms of the facilities maintenance. Just a brief update, we had our first kickoff meeting for the kids' rink, uh, or sorry, the, uh, Comical Arena, um, floor replacement project. Um, so the contractor is, is ready to go. Um, we're just kind of still awaiting, um, how that proceeds, but, um, they are making everything, um, accessible and ready so that, uh, you know, the kind of drop of the hat, they can be here and, and start that project. On the city staff side, we're gonna start working on a communication strategy. Um, although we've, um, connected with major user groups that will be affected by the project. Uh, we do want to kind of give, uh, some general, um, updates to the public, um, considering we will be closing off the, um, concourse area. So, um, those doors will be locked throughout the, the project, um, so just letting people know, um, just the information such as that, um, before the project actually starts. Uh, second major project that we're hoping to proceed with at the T M C is the heat recovery slash HVAC project. Um, that went out for tender last week. Um, we're anticipating three site visits, um, to try and, um, answer any questions that contractors may have. That will close April second. We're hoping for, uh, with a, with a longer, um, tender process, um, because it is a little bit of a complicated project and some phasing in scheduling there. Um, with the heat recovery slash ammonia side versus the HVAC recovery side later in the year. Uh, we just want to give contractors the opportunity to, to spend the time with it and make sure that their bids are accurate and, um, and provide them that time to, to get us an actual bid, so we don't receive one or two bids. So we're hoping for, for a little bit more than that. So look to see, um, some implementations coming from that. Um, this, the tentative schedule right now that we've tried to set within the tender documents is starting in and around the same time as the Comical Floor. Um, because there will be the downs, uh, ammonia plant already. Um, and there to try and keep with the timeline so that there's no effect on the Comical Arena restarting. And then the HVAC side will be phased more into the shoulder season, so we're not relying on, uh, or shutting down HVAC systems in the summer. Um, there's kind of in that middle period, um, where heat or cooling isn't really required, so we can try and manage that as best possible. Uh, and lastly, um, we did in twenty twenty four, um, complete a Ford to S B C energy study for the Trail Aquatic Adviser Center. Um, it's a very similar study that we did at the, um, arena. Uh, seventy five percent of which is funded by Ford to S B C, um, with a further twenty five percent, so a hundred percent funding. If we implement any of the recommended changes, um, through that study, um, we did have a final meeting, um, they have, instituted or recommending for, um, E C M's or emissions control, um, or mitigation control, um, recommendations. And, uh, we're just awaiting the final reports and hopefully we can put together some funding, um, to tackle those. They're not as intricate as the T M C was, so hopefully we can kind of manage those in, in twenty twenty five. And that's all I have for today.
Any questions, Colin? Okay, uh, Counselor Benson, sorry.
Thank you, through the chair. Um, thanks for the report. So with the, the floor replacement project and the concourse being closed so that residential won't be able to use that as like a walking, while the work is going on, is that like safety reasons?
Through the cherry, yes, um, so, um, at the time, um, during construction, the boards will be down, there'll be kind of no, um, way to delineate, um, that whole area.
Okay.
So, um, just to try and.
Eliminate the hazard.
Yeah, you know, so that the contractor isn't managing, um, the public.
Okay.
Um, we would be closing that down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, through the chair. What do you do with those, uh, micro square cars that are on the side of the road when you're plowing roads and you can't get hurt, do you guys haul them away? I see tickets on.
Yeah.
Or, uh, that's gonna be frustrating, hey, you're trying to clean the street and it frozen solid into the snowbank, basically.
Ms. Butler wants to answer that.
If you don't mind, yeah, that's a.
No, it's just curious.
It's a, it's a bylaw enforcement issue, um, the day that we were, uh, cleaning Rossland Avenue, which is where.
That's what I was.
Yes, um, so everybody, the signs were put up the day before to say no parking after the, I think it was seven A M. Um, and of course, there remain several vehicles. Uh, we, there's not much we can do about it at the time. We did have a tow truck come that day and remove two. Um, since then, though, I've noticed, uh, several vehicles still not moving. So last week, we towed another additional two vehicles, one that we believe has been abandoned because it was registered in Kona and has been on Rossland for months, and another one that had no insurance on it. So clearly, um, both those vehicles were in question, so we had them towed last week. And we have our sites on four or more, um, that we believe are just being abandoned along Rossland Avenue. So we are ticketing them according to our bylaw, um, giving them ample notice, uh, reaching out if we do know the people that own them and giving them the heads up. But, um, definitely it seems to be that, uh, people are abandoning vehicles on Rossland Avenue, so we will be making sure.
Wow.
Well, fifty years ago, they would dump them over the bank.
Now we have that.
Yeah. So now they just pay them off to the gods.
Now they're just blocking my access to my yoga studio.
And the more, the more difficult areas are not on these collector streets, but on, you know, just residential streets. There, there is an increased level of parking, on street level parking.
Uh huh.
Um, and in terms of our operations, we just have to plow around them. Um, if the car is gone when we're doing another pass, um, then we can do it. It gets to a certain point though where if you start doing that too late after the actual snowfall, then you're just creating more.
Yeah.
Issues down the line, so, yeah, it becomes a little bit of a.
So I just have a quick question for you, Dave, because I've been getting, um, emails about it. It was probably about a year ago when we were in conversation with the Ministry of Transportation about the doorway there.
Yeah.
Uh, people are asking about the data that was received and what it looks like and if we're going to be moving forward with any, um, uh, precautions, I guess, in that area because of the safety issues and the speed of traffic. And, uh, I just wondered if you'd heard anything from the Minister of Transportation now that the election is over.
Yeah, no, we, they did run a, uh, what's called a crosswalk warrant, uh, which is a provision, provincial system through their engineering office. Um, when they did respond after the warrant was completed, they informed the city that their data did not meet any requirements for additional, um, measures in that area. Um, that's based on a lot of factors. With, uh, number of lanes, um, sightlines, um, obviously speed limits, um, number of crossings. Um, so they, that's all input, inputted into their formula. Um, and as far as they made the city aware, it wouldn't meet any requirements under that warrant. Um, that is to say, the city could proceed with, um, additional factors there. Um, but that would not be subject to any agreements with the province on, on arterial highway cost sharing. Um, which there is certain, um, parameters around, um, who's responsible, responsible for what. Um, relating to new capital costs and ongoing maintenance. Um, if the city were to proceed, it would be at a hundred percent the city's cost in both terms of design, construction and maintenance afterwards. Um, so that being said, uh, staff would need some. Um so that being said, uh staff would need some direction as to um what we're trying to achieve there, uh there would be some, you know, costs associated with design. That design would then have to go back to the ministry for approval to make sure that it fits within their um standards and then construction in the stadium, if not following year, um and then obviously ongoing associated maintenance costs.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Chair, I have to ask. The snowplow driver puts the windrow in front of my driveway, you can't even raise the blade. I'm I'm being facetious, but we get complaints on that and then obviously it's impossible.
Yes.
To not put windrows in front of driveways.
Yes, so um luckily with the city of Trail, we do right now have a twenty-four hour snow plowing operation, um we do have one four by four at least on twenty-four hours a day. Um when we are plowing, primarily when it's during a snow event, um or the immediate cleanup, we have a piece of equipment, we call them five tons, um that have the belly plow on their blade, that is a fixed um piece of equipment, it does not articulate any which way, um and so when they are doing their first pass, second pass, third pass, when they're in the snow event, after the snow event, it is just going to the passenger side of that um unit, they're trying to um keep the right turns as much as possible so that it's kind of always going to the curb side, um and then not kind of crisscrossing there. Um but those pieces of equipment are strictly fixed and go into that side, yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Similar question, um in terms of like drains in front of people's houses. Is that residents responsibility to ensure they're like clear? Just thinking with the rain on the the weekend.
Yeah, um it is a city asset, um we don't have any policy around it. That being said, you know, as um our utilities manager informed council a couple of meetings ago, we had over fifteen hundred cash basins around the city, um that being that we can't keep every single one clear at
Yeah.
moment of the day, um and so if residents do believe that there is an issue or concern, um to try and get out if possible, um we are working internally um about some better communication about that and and what residents can do leading up to that, um but in terms of calling in, we will just triage things as they come in and when we do have word of say a weather event, we will try and get ahead of the most problem areas um as we can and work out work from there.
Okay, well, thank you both for coming today.
Thanks a lot.
It's great to see you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. We have the building department report generating this at twenty twenty-five. Is there someone to move that report and to close their button, I'll do some favor. That was carried, thank you. Item uh six B is the interim housing needs assessment for twenty twenty-four, and I will pass this over to Mr. McQuack.
Okay. I think from the staff report and from our conversations, I I believe the council is aware that uh the province in uh rolling out some of their funding and uh changes to legislation is that they had also required that a interim housing needs report be done and and to address a number of issues that either were not in or or um hadn't been contemplated in the previous uh housing needs report. That um we as a city had done ours as a collaboration with the regional district of recruiting boundary. I think going forward, it would be best for the city to do our own, and so we will, we will commit to doing that. Um there is kind of a question now that we've done the interim, uh that we um have to have one done by twenty twenty-eight and then one of the big components, I was talking with the ministry, they're like, well, should we kind of break out and get it done now, they said, well, the problem is the census and the census data. And so census, I think, is coming in twenty twenty-six. Anyway, it's coming soon, so it's not just leaving the case of them getting the data, then you're sort of discipling the data and providing other data. And that's a real key component, otherwise you're sort of going off of the previous census data, which um you know, is not as valuable as having the most up to date, so we'll take that in our advisement and and uh look into when that's gonna play out and and how does it fit? Um because I did speak about, well, you have to have one done by twenty twenty-eight, so if you have it done in twenty twenty-six or seven, you know, is that it will allow you then to be on a marker of doing it um in in line with kind of the census that's happening, so. So one thing that did happen as we were preparing this uh for um for council and looking through the different documents, they had um a special tool that you plug in your numbers and and kind of from their uh assessment tool tells you the different components. Who's missing in what areas in the different uh models, and so we did that work, we've done provided the chart, and that's at the kind of very beginning, there's the the global chart of the different spaces that the city is going to need based on this assessed value. And um, oh crap, uh and so uh yes, so you can see in five years, uh core housing need thirty-seven, twenty-year or one forty-eight. You see the numbers to reduce homelessness as it goes on down the line, uh household growth is probably the biggest factor. Uh you can see that in twenty years, we're gonna need close to twelve hundred homes being built here, and what does that look like? Uh we will be talking about the potential revitalization of downtown, what does, what kind of housing does that opportunity will provide for us to be able to take a good bite into some of the the numbers that are there, but as I noted in our document, this is, the city's not in the business of creating housing. Um yes, we, this council has made some good decisions to take on a building, demolish it, allow for a number of forms of housing, but that's the sort of pieces that uh you may not ever have that opportunity to do that. So your goal is to provide uh the, and this is where the province has also stepped in, where they've kind of they put that small, medium housing needs uh zoning changes that we had. Uh so they kind of created the ability or opportunity, so if you've got a single family law now, whereas before it might have had one unit on it, you can now have to three, depending on the size, you could have four, there's a lot of uh potential there. And so those zoning is really the driver for municipality. They did talk about, you know, what different pieces they want in the interim, like one of the things that we've done, well, we talked about the temporary use permit that's provided some twenty-five uh um housing for those vulnerable populations, we've talked about some of the zoning pieces that we have brought, does it mean again that those people that got the zoning have actually moved forward on the housing? Because that's going to be, you know, uh capital uh and resource and what's the market saying for even being able to build, we all know that the cost of construction right now has made it extremely prohibitive to to build. And so there's sort of a balancing effect, but um what's important here, I think, uh is to give council and the community the update on what the document said. Uh they also spoke about uh what thing that we didn't have, which is one of the reasons why we kind of set back on having this prepared for council was when the R D K B uh regional one was done, they did not pick up on the areas of particular key areas of need, whether or not that's for affordable housing, rental housing, seniors housing, so we have gone through, created those statements of need, I have put this off to the province, uh just to make sure that as I brought it here, that it wouldn't go to them and them go, um this isn't good enough. So at least on their side, they were comfortable with how we've uh created this interim needs report and the fact that we've attached it to the twenty twenty R D K B report, so they're uh comfortable with how this has uh been created. Happy to take any questions, I'm not an expert in this field, but I would do my best.
Councillor Benson. Don't make, just kidding, um so it was due at the end of December, is there any implications that were?
No, no, they were happy, we have been in conversation with them, they said that you know we knew, first of all, they said, hey, when they gave me direction, because one thing that's great about the ministry is they're helpful. We're not here to kind of hit you with this, they wanted, if you're not talking to them, okay, well, then maybe there's something that's gonna come. But uh if you're talking to them and their big piece was, oh, hey, you know, as you're doing this, we noticed that you're missing this information, uh most other maybe uh it was like they said on um some of the information in the previous housing needs report, so you should update yours to be in compliance, so that kind of takes some effort. I also discussed that they understand that things come, it takes a couple of weeks to get to council and then to go through the necessary steps. No, uh they've been great, they were, what was really again beneficial for me was they provided me with a number of smaller uh and larger municipalities and how they had attached theirs through the interim report, here's some of the statements they had used, here's some of the examples, so it was very um wasn't kind of re-creating a wheel, there was a few wheels I could look at and helped us on creating hers.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, through the chair, thank you, Mr. Mator. Page three, uh under rental housing. Thirty-one percent, anyway, and this is a twenty twenty-one data, and I understand that was when the census was done.
Yeah.
Um rent was nine thirty-three, median rent was eight seventy. My concern with those numbers is that they don't reflect the market average rental rate in Trail, now I Googled departments dot com and found a site that I hope is credible, that says that a one-bedroom trail apartment is eleven hundred and fifty dollars a month, a two-bedroom is an average of fourteen hundred dollars per month, and a three-bedroom is eighteen hundred dollars per month. And these rates are consistent with my own uh internet searches, um and I believe that these rates, and the increase is is a result of the increase in pricing in Trail from this period of time, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And using B C assessment values, the price of housing in Trail from twenty twenty-one to present is increased by sixty-one percent. I also was provided data from the home price index for all sales in Trail that shows a forty-eight point three percent over the past five years increase in housing prices. And the one that really staggered me was an eighty-seven percent increase if you go back ten years. So and I I think that these prices or these costs have been translated or transferred to to renters and they're feeling the crunch now, so the the average rent in Trail, it's hard to say what it is because there may be a lot of existing contracts or or grandfathered in agreements, which is awesome if they are and hope they stay there, but for a current renter coming into this market, those numbers don't reflect, in my opinion, an accurate uh real description of what they're facing. So my suggestion uh would be, and I would like to make a motion to this effect, that the report, I apologize for this, we return it to staff to have it updated to include current market rental rates in Trail. That would be my motion.
And we have.
So, yes.
Family moment, but but see make the latest statistics from C N H C, which are current as of twenty twenty-three be used for this, for for this, I did send the information to Sandy, I'm not sure if it got passed on or not, so they they have the most comprehensive numbers when it comes to like current rentals, average of rental rates for departments, population, council, census, neighborhood zones, all that kind of stuff. How do you stop core housing needs? And it's trash specific.
So, um is there any other questions or comments on Paul Sir Cash's motion? Yeah, okay, is there a second?
We do not require a second.
Sorry?
We do not require a second.
Oh, okay, right, sorry, it was moved, others in favor? Thank you, that was a fair one.
Yes, uh and to Chair, um just to be clear, that's kind of the only change, like there isn't more stuff coming, or do you have more questions?
No, that's, that's all I have, thank you.
So I did have a question on how you come up with the uh vacancy rate. Because was that done this for this year or was that done for the twenty twenty numbers in the report, how does that, how do you get that three percent?
Well, I think that's where, again, they talk about here, they say, we're ready, like your life will rental, the vacancy rate is not available for trial, so this is where um in trying to go through that uh information, it's it's uh it again, I'm not an expert in this field, this is an area where um we try to do the best with the data that we have.
Yeah, no, no, I and I I respect that, it was just a question on how we come up with that number.
I mean, if the through the province is suggesting maybe the three percent.
Oh.
It's not, it's not the mean or anything.
Oh, I was kind of wondering if it was just here or, okay, and I mean I, when I look on page six of the report, I, they're not actually using the temporary shelter as for numbers in housing, are they?
I'm sorry?
On page six of your report, it's, it talks about a temporary shelter.
Yeah.
So those numbers for um what would that be used for, that twenty-five beds?
Well, what they want to know is what actions council or councils have taken to reduce the housing since twenty twenty. So this is where we, yeah, again, we we did the um zoning file and and spur technically forward with the province, there's a few number of items that are in there. The only thing is that council provided a temporary use permit to provide a temporary shelters.
Okay.
Those are some of the things that we've done.
Okay. Okay, so we have the um motion, right, it's moved and seconded and that was carried. Okay, so we will move on, does anybody need a break before?
Yeah, the Chief of Justice was wondering, can this then with that amendment come directly to it doesn't have to come back, you know, like maybe the law, we can go directly to next um the March tenth meeting.
Uh, sorry, through the chair, no, it should come back to the committee of the whole meeting, but we can also bring it forward at that meeting for final resolution.
Because I want to get this into the program.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you for reading.
Do we have a lot of reading material this time?
I'm in trying to.
Okay. So. Oh guys, I wasn't able to get this out to everybody before, before the weekend, but. The flu bug has certainly hit a lot of managers, and so getting information. And just stopping in the office last week made it quite difficult to be able to do it. Want to make sure, as I want to make sure that it's as accurate as possible. I will note that I am working on this today, so there might be an error or two in it, I feel comfortable that it's not, but. Just wanted to kind of go through it. I don't want to say high level, we have time, you know, we'll be discussing this in the future. This has to go back, get all the, the asks from the group. And then, as we'll look at some of the reserve projections, kind of, okay, so what is the need to have? What is the hack to have, kind of conversations, we need to go on, we need to do some prior organization. And so we will go through that as staff. But I just thought that it would be important to kind of talk through just about where we ended up. Projected actuals, as you know, we are still working on the year-end financials, but that, that's going well. But that's why we've got the column of what here was twenty twenty-four was, and here's what we're receiving so far in twenty twenty. For actuals, and kind of seeing where we landed as compared to budget. So, this document has a number of different pages to it. I apologize for maybe some of the fine print, but I didn't hear anybody play too badly to get all the information on in a, in a meaningful fashion. So, again, kind of broken down by departments in a lot of ways. Our information services, you can see that we were able to get the servers. And other activity, the disaster recovery, that we talked about, so that's in place. We also got our desktops, or laptops, or our towers for the desktops have also been purchased, so that was done. Some of the other work, again, I'm relying on I T, although they're not at one point in time, if something is a need, but they don't find later that it is. If they find a workaround, that seems to sometimes the solution, that's why something is not. Was kind of funded in twenty twenty-four, but then doesn't get funded again in twenty twenty-five, that's always some of those questions that I have is, oh, did we find another route? Or did we increase our ability through servers that maybe eliminated some of the concerns about wireless as an example replacement? So, can rely on that. As you can see, we, we go out a number of years. We had a pretty heavy year in twenty twenty-four, and you can see in twenty twenty-eight, looks like we're going to again have some more heavier years over those other, outer years. As we deal with, again, another refresh on our computers. And or refresh on our server, storage and hardware as well. If I go down under row one oh two, you can see buildings. We've got the Unicor daycare, yes, I know council has seen this sort of, you know, a number of years, and there's no activity going on. We do have a proponent that is talking with the city right now to be, be an operator. And also in contact with the ministry, have a lot of optimism that, that we could actually let this project going. One of the big challenges for those in the community and for council is not so much just to open a daycare. But this particular daycare is to have extended hours, to really try to assist those families that have. Individuals that are working shift work, so that makes it difficult, it's already difficult enough to supply the staffing to do your basic. Type of daycare, let alone have one that has extended hours, so that seems to be one of the catch. But again, optimistic that we got the operator potentially, and again, if not, we will report that out. Some of the roof work, one thing that we did note this year is that the roof work for our, while nothing was done this year. Because the roof work was actually already budgeted for in the cemetery, under roof work. And so we had doubled it up, that happens sometimes, as we're learning together on our budgeting. But we've got some work to be done going forward, not only here at City Hall. But we've got some other locations as well, I think that there's some, some work to be done over at the. Trail, leisure and quiet center as well. One thing that I know goes on the community safety task force, we talked about our downtown cameras that we have, our C C T V program. Better new technology coming out for less expensive. The quote that we received didn't come in a time to be able to pull trigger in twenty twenty-four, so we've kind of doubled up twenty twenty-four's with twenty twenty-five's. So we expect to really do a, a big job of replacement of some of our old equipment. Should be more easier to access, and it should also be. A better quality as far as the, the shots, so a number of different locations that we're looking at, so. There will be some new locations, i.e. sort of where the walking bridge kind of ends in groutage. That's an area of new, but we are all also upgrading the current, some of the current units that we had in the downtown. So we've got them in place, but we're going to get some new units there. We've got special projects, that's kind of dealing with us trying to deal with. Williams building and the older tradition world demolition, and looking at next steps on what do we need to do for. Next steps on revitalization of the downtown, so we've got a big block of money there. Important to know that this would be the monies that we received under the growth fund. That we are, you know, putting as a placeholder to be able to take on this work and fund it. And that is key for council to be aware. R C N P, row one twenty-seven, we have a couple of years of roof replacement over on that building. One here that is supposed to be a sharing ratio with the province. Because we not only host the attachment, but we have a split, obviously, between fourteen members of the twenty-two are trail. The other ones being for the other small municipalities and regions. Cemetery. We have a, a number of projects there, we've had a hard time on, I think, just in the transition of having managers. And trying to make sure that we are on front of all of the capital projects that we have, that some of these have not been. Been successful and or they've been moved, some of the other ones that we're, we have plenty of funding from the. To be able to do the work, it's just being able to get it lined up and having management's time to take that on. Just speaking to you there, we did get the roof replacement done, and in, oops, under bubble as well, please. And just again, for council to say that funding that comes from the cemetery is through the regional district. So there is a group of communities that pay into their R D K B. They have operating funding that they provided, and also provides with capital funding. So that, a trail residence does pay, but it's not necessarily city taxation, it's coming through that requisition from their R D K B. Airport, one of the nice things about having a new building is that you're not necessarily looking at. You know, having to do a big capital project on that, but we do have smaller things that we want to look into. Number one is that we want to do the airport master plan, and that's been brought up, and I know that council looked, and they had a motion. As far as getting us to apply for the B cap grant, and so our hope is that we will be able to undertake that this year. My expectation is that you'll notice there's a lot of numbers out in the other years, and when we get the master plan, you can start to see where, this is where things start to fill in. When you keep doing all this planning, and then it's like all of a sudden, oh, now we've got numbers to go out into the years. But we've had some real success with obviously the, the airport. The movement that they have now of having the smaller plane come in the morning and then the sav in the afternoon. They've also put on the, the bus, which I got to use on Friday, and so that's, it's, it's a long haul. But it didn't mean that I got back to, I got back, right? So it's, it is one of the things, it's a nice feature to have, so hopefully that allows more people to, to, you know, look at, at taking the. The Pacific coastal to make up. And so, but anyway, we'll be talking more about on the other operations side, the operating budget in next meeting. Transportation capital, a number of different projects here that. Oh, I'm noticing that I already made a mistake, that there should have been a carry forward on the streetlight decorations, I think we should have had forty. Five thousand in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-five. So I will make that adjustment here with my pencil, but make sure the council sees it, so that's. The funding that we've seen in the past that for the big self-lakes and other items that have gone, and we've tried to take them down some of the old. And remove some of the old historical type of Christmas decorations, and kind of got these names, it's.
What do you do with the old things?
Some of them are beyond repair, and they have been just discarded. And some of them we keep around and see if they can be refurbished, if, if electricians have time to upgrade them, upgrade the bulbs and that sort of thing, they could be repurposed. One of the key components there I wanted to show is that the groutage under row one ninety-two, again, we're still. I'm not sure we're completely finished with these voices, but you can see that it's coming on, on what we expected for budget. We also were able to take on a number of letdowns. And I would see that that's something that we want to continue to do in our community, make it that, sort of that active transportation. It's one of those small wins, if you can go into a, a corner on, on some of our, either downtown streets or along Second Street or whatnot, and be able to. Make it possible for, for the. Little strollers, wheelchairs, those that are less mobile to, to use our sidewalk. Got a couple of other places where some big work to be done, second and Goko is one. Hope we're not saying that, right? The other one there, as part of our strategic assessment, we've got some money in there for coverage share assessment. And we also have the, an ongoing, and some more improvements on our downtown garbage cans. So we did a good chunk of them, and we wanted to do the rest, and also figure out what is the best way to do that? We've had some wall-mounted ones, and maybe they're not the best way of collecting the garbage. And so, but in light of that, we want to make sure that individuals have the ability to, to get rid of their garbage, not just leave it on their streets. There's some money put in place for there. There was a planning, and so this is one that's like, you know, there's one ninety-seven that talks about. Second Avenue sidewalk drainage safety, and it's an R D K B synergy project, and this would be in line with them doing some work for the. New bus shelter in the area, so they've got a bunch of work so well there, and they're going to work together on doing that. You can see that there's a bit of planning money placed in for twenty twenty-five, but in twenty twenty-six, you can see we've got a pretty large number. And hopefully on the planning, we'll get a better sense of, is that the actual cost that we need to incur to, to do some of that work? Come some of the outer years, as you know, we really focus on twenty twenty-five and then twenty twenty-six as well. But once you start getting into twenty-seven and twenty-nine, they are placeholders. One I wanted to pull a point out in particular was sort of our estimate right now on the Glover Road sidewalk, this is all of the work that we talked about. During some of our strategic priorities on what needs to happen at that location, whether it's the Camden sidewalk. There also needs to be some stormwater area, and so it's, and sometimes it maybe seems. Actually, we should probably change the name to, from the sidewalk to just sort of overall upgrades of Glover Road, maybe I should actually probably be able to do that. Yeah, I'm not sure anyone has any questions on those items. As we move down, we see the slop sewers, we groutage again, coming in, in line with what was budgeted for that. Dooney Avenue, this is one that has kind of carried forward, we got some of the. Engineering drawings finished, the six hundred thousand that's in there is, is a combining of the stormwater. The parcade work that needs to be done at the Forest Parcade. There is also another couple, two hundred thousand dollars each in both the water and sewer fund to make this project a one million dollar project. Be able to upgrade that area and deal with the stormwater and the drainage that's happening in that area. Daniel Street, so a good news story here, the Daniel Street had quite a significant contingency in it. And as we are wrapping this up, we are finding that we monitoring this, that we are not having any big cost overruns. And other issues that may have been run into, because we were dealing with a significant amount of infrastructure upgrade. So that's a good news story, again, I caveat that with the fact that we are still going through the year-end cycle of making sure that we get all the invoices. And they're in the right spots, so, but that will be a good news story in that if, that's an additional amount of money that goes back in the reserve. Because we are putting pressure on this particular reserve for sure. We have a bit of money in twenty twenty-five for some, getting more work on Cedar Street. Works yard, again, been very successful out there on delineating, making sure that we've got a nice coverage for our sand and salt. Breaking out a lot of road gravel, breaking up the areas where the vehicles come in and dump their waste. And when I say that, I mean the sweeper goes and cleans that up. One of the challenges in trail is that. You can't use that for compost, other communities can, but it tends to be a lead component, and then that kind of eliminates that. So we have to find a way to sort of pull that waste and then be able to take it to the little landfill. Kind of delineating it means that we don't mix it in with other things, and to hopefully lower the costs of being able to. Haul it up to, to the dump. Cover's rooftop, that's another thing we have to do, and then some other, just. Look at the, some other yard improvements where we've got. Items that should have storage, so we're looking at same roofing over that, which I think is important, rain is never a good thing to be. Dripping on your assets. And then, of course, we've got some money in there funded through the climate action funding for the Green Fleet Master Plan, that's a plan for twenty twenty-five. The hope is that with some of this work that went ongoing is that we would be coming to the end of, of sort of what we've got as the yard approval. Seeing that we've been able to, to really make it a much more efficient space, not only for the vehicle usage. But for being able to go and get the material that you need when it's for getting sand and salt for the trucks and or gravel. For the utilities crews that are upgrading our utility pipeline. Council's already aware, in twenty twenty-five, we are using some money from the, again, climate action or the L gap funding, two hundred thousand dollars. And that's for the electric vehicles and then a portion of the aerial lift truck, just aerial, yeah, lift vehicle. The other components here is that the wheeled excavator came in a little bit higher than in the end. One of the areas there that I actually have more conversation to have to with the fleet managers, a. Pricing was under, but what was missed in the conversation was that P S T and G S T, we get to claim G S T back, but not P S T. So if we're adding our budget numbers, we need to make sure that we've got whatever fees, P S T, etc., that would be involved in that. The ride-on trimmer and larger, large fuel more, they had, as we noted in our updates to council and its financial updates. But they've been purchased, they're expected to be coming in the spring of time to be able to put them to work. Got a few other pieces of equipment that we're looking at, and then going out ongoing. You know, it's, it's quite surprising when you think about a sidewalk block going costing four hundred thousand dollars, that's the price of some of this equipment, it's, it's really something. But we've got a plan here and to be reviewed, because as we look into our reserves, you'll see that. We're going to have to prioritize or several ways of buying equipment that does multiple things, and I think that's certainly one of. The points that I've known it from our fleet managers, that if you get a hook truck, sometimes you've been able to. When I say that on a hook truck, it's almost like we're tandem truck, big truck. But you can pull in and pull out, make it so that it's a dump truck, and then you can also pull up a piece of equipment on it and make it so that it. It can haul water or, or brine and those sorts of things, so those are sorts of the equipment, I think that we're trying to buy one piece of equipment. But make sure that it's usable over multiple parts of our season. Then we move to the T M C, obviously, this is where our major projects are for twenty twenty-five. We are looking at a major capital here, but you can see that basically fifty percent of all capital will be in the T M C in twenty twenty-five. Certainly that's putting the pressure on the capital budget reserve, but we also do have some significant amount of grants coming forward, basically two million in grants. And also, we've got the donation reme. And also, we've got the donation remainder of the donation that we have to to get. Um you know, again, uh. A revitalization of the Comical Arena floor has been that concrete floor has been there for fifty six years, so that's it's passes well since its life. So. We can get this done now and it carries on for another fifty or seventy five years. That'll be value. Again, ongoing work that we were doing outside of not a studio upgrades, door upgrades. Um one piece that I thought was really important and I think is going to be valuable is underlying three thirty eight, which says uh conference. Conference IT is one thing that we are finding is that people want to rent the space. And so we need to have a better um. Media uh ability for those that want to use this space. So so hopefully that again will drive some additional revenues as we go forward. One of the ones I just wanted to point out, uh in particular was the Memorial Lounge third floor renovation. We do have it in here. We have it in twenty seven to twenty eight. Uh however, uh it's based on our government grants there. So if we got sixty seven percent of that funded, that's sort of how I've um. Put that in as a placeholder, because if you're going to be able to get grants, one of the things that the province and other funders want to see is isn't your five year financial plan. So if you can say, yes, we've got this in our plan. Here's our goal. Uh that allows us the opportunity to say that we're, we would like to commit to it. Obviously, we wouldn't move forward, likely would not move forward. On it if it was just taxpayer funded, but if we can get a pay like some of these other projects, if we can get a large uh grant for that, then that's something we would consider. Um yeah, the TMC is a, it's, you know, it's a bread and butter of the recreation and you can see that even the ceiling and or the roofing. Over the uh Queen Co Gym is two other components. There's a number of years out there, but they will also come quickly. Um the top, uh some good news there. So it's always nice to get good news. We had some uh envelope. In the past years, we had put up a million dollar placeholder on our uh building envelope. And some of the work that's been going on, uh and that's where we're seeing some of our building envelope assessment work being done by by WSP. And Polar, a two company engineering companies, and we are looking at that being fully funded by Forest Grant because they want to see us improve our our. Usage of uh of electricity and gas because they obviously provide both. And uh some of the work that's being done, they're saying, actually, we're not as concerned about the business, the envelope, it's more about how we can uh do a better job with the. Current infrastructure system that we have. So we're waiting on some of those reports, but right now we have lowered uh into twenty twenty sixth from a million to a hundred thousand dollars. Doesn't mean that there won't be other uh asks we go through, but that was a good news story for us and and will certainly take some pressure off of um. Off our uh capital reserve. Pool is a a caustic place, and so just the grants and the pump, sorry, the the pumps, the grates, uh the different. Um tiles, all that work always needs to be upgraded and done, but there's also some fun stuff in here. You notice that we do have a budget for. Uh some improvements to the Jim and Curry equipment. We also have the climbing wall feature. Again, the idea being that this would be something that would be built out and you can climb on it, and if you fell off, you fall on the pool. Also upgrades to the pool spray features and water slide coming to end of life. So you know, again. It's might seem like, hey, they just got here. It's well, twenty twenty five years later, it's time to upgrade some of these things, and they are expensive. And then the last page uh that we have is for parks. And quite successful year on a number of different areas. A couple of other areas that sort of caught us. Uh one was the um. The the Queenie playground that we got that installed, that was done early January last year. The Butler Park, uh it'll again, remembering it was a three million dollar project. And as the some of the final numbers have come in, uh we've got, we're fifty thousand dollar over, then we'll be budgeted in twenty twenty four, but that project is looking great and it's done. J Space signage, I think that that's been something that's been um well received, looks great out there. Uh the. Digitization of the trip times, that's one of the big projects that's undertaken by RFC, and I'm sure that's positive. Daniel Street uh playground equipment, you can see this slightly over budget there, but again, another that's two playgrounds upgraded in one year, and that's really good news. Uh we got our bear bins downtown and uh. So we have the work there. As we um move through into twenty twenty five and onwards, you'll see a number of of uh amounts. And one that I want to counsel to be aware of is that if we're gonna take on capital work at the. Fieldhouse, that's a sharing ratio with the school, the trick. So if we've got something there, that's why I have those down below, you'll see a cost share with SD at twenty. So we have to agree, they have to agree to that too. So as much as this is a placeholder, we want to do this work. We want to make sure that they're saying, yes, this is work that we're going to be able to fund. We have tree assessment in here as well, and we also have some twenty thousand dollars for the gyro park uh tree replacement in addition to some gyro park master plan, what we're doing with the whole park, so. We have another playground in twenty twenty six, Popo Park, and I think that we're getting close. On those individual parks and it'll be time for. Um you know, again, there's some of these other ones that are big, thank you. Um Haley Park, the track replacement. Gyro Spade Park is another one that's gonna need some love. Out in the number of years, but um. Uh yeah, those are some of those pieces. Again, reminding council that. We're gonna focus on twenty twenty five because that's what we're gonna get done. Twenty twenty six is obviously something that we need to do planning, and then what's the uh what's the plan for twenty twenty six? But that's twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, move out there. You can see that uh. The numbers are a little bit less. Wish by the time we get there, I know that they will be filling in, but um just makes it important for council to see all that we're dealing with. Then the last rows here kind of just kind of breaks down the funding source and. The line in light blue there is the one that kind of shows you where most funding is coming from. And so uh. That's the area where we'll flip over to the next page. And should there be different placement reserve? Page one, it says on the top right hand there. And uh you can see, we did not um. Uh in the current year, we're pretty much in line with what um we expected for a little bit less because of the mower and uh ride on more. Back to four O eight um and the equipment that we purchased. Against our purchases in our reserve, and uh you can see that going into twenty twenty five. Uh you can see the allocation that the council has been putting into reserve, three fifty a year, and we also had two hundred thousand in LGA funding, but we have a big year of purchases in twenty twenty five. And you can see that the reserve starts to slowly kind of dwindle as we go out into twenty twenty nine. So. A pretty healthy spot, and this is where I think just maybe some finding out what the year of equipment is, can we uh what what equipment needs to be prioritized? What is equipment, uh as Mr. Moly spoke about there, fixing some of the old that's been able to get us through some of those years, those are kind of be some of the conversations we're going to need to have because. Otherwise, we're going to eat up all the money that we have. Then in page two. We have sort of a similar discussion going on there. Um and. You know, big year in twenty twenty four and a bigger year in twenty twenty five. Twenty twenty six, um not as much, but you can see three consistently in the five million dollar range in 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 capital expenditures. Noting that some of that is being funded by grants, it's not all from the reserve allocation from operating, but important for council to be aware. Uh I did put in in twenty twenty seven that based on where we're at, that we would need to borrow from our general surplus to get through twenty twenty uh. Seven into twenty eight, twenty nine, and then we would pay that back over a couple of years, which is not an uncommon practice. For municipalities that um you're able to borrow from reserve or from other reserves, and so rather than going out and having to get a uh. You know, a loan for four or five years or three or four years, if you have the ability to sort of the flexibility of of funding things uh internally, you're allowed to do that, so. But very clearly, you can see that even in dealing that and paying it back, by the time we get to twenty twenty nine, our reserve is is down to uh a low amount. However, we are putting about. Three point six million dollars at that time into the reserve each year. One of the things that uh our staff as well as we moved this new chart of counts that we've created. Is that how many of these jobs that we have, that we, a lot of detail here and maybe too much for council and. Um but how many of these are projects that we've taken by our staff? And if we've, if we're taking those with that staff, then and we had to make sure that they do the work. But does that take some pressure off of our operating budget and then do we maybe put some additional money into the reserve? Uh as we work through our budget in in twenty twenty. So this is a, this is a draft. This is not final. I wanted to get sort of just the high level numbers. Obviously, we've got some work to do on um. On finalizing this, prioritizing this and bringing it back to council. Um hope that we would be able to do that as well. And with our first go with the um operating, just the operations budget for twenty twenty. Five and onwards, and then that would be coming for our March tenth meeting. It's coming together. Uh we are in good in a good state. And we got to hear from today on the different asks that we have, so we need to implement those into our operating budget uh and have more discussions. I would hope that next time that we don't have um. Because if this is a bit rushed, and again, not having, not giving council the document ahead of time is not great, but my goal would be that next time we meet, you'll have the the documents in front of you. Have an opportunity so that we would uh I would ask for a bit more of a a larger timeframe uh go towards budget in our February or our March tenth meeting. Yeah, no, there was a lot there. Um. And uh and again, in the end, even after the February or March tenth meetings. We do, we need to have a meeting in between um council meetings that is just a budget meeting and just to to go over and and make sure that everyone's comfortable and. By that means it'd also be really close on what's happening with the year end numbers, which. You know, on on the face right now, especially with some of the interest income that we earned, much like the uh library, uh being better. And some of the savings we've had in there is we also likely would have a chance of being able to allocate some reserve into uh into different. Uh surpluses or interest of our reserves, which will help some of the cost pressures that we're seeing um in our budget right now. I don't know if I've made everyone fall asleep or not, but um. Happy to take any questions. Lot, it's a lot of the. So I think then if you want to move on to the the next.
We turn Destra?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh when we met last, uh certainly. Um we. Making sure that not only council, but hopefully our community at large is aware of some of the budget pressures that. Uh the RDKB is dealing with and how it will um. How it affects city trail. And as that again, when you get that invoice, it says city of trail on top of it. And included in that is city trail taxes, but RDKB, school, uh hospital, uh BC assessment, and then are your major things. So a couple of things that happened, uh certainly the board uh from and what I brought in here was sort of here was the snapshot at, you know. January twenty ninth, here's the snapshot of February twelve, and then part of it's like, okay, so what changed? And they did have some savings overall on what. The allocations were or what the asks were for budget. But one of the things that I did note is that the percentages changed, and when I say that, it's much like we've just talked at this table before. If your home uh is at the same. Value as the average assessed value, then you would likely pay whatever that increase is in the tax rate. However, if your assessed value went up twenty percent and the average was ten, then you're going to get more of the tax burden, same as if your. Property was, you know, at five percent and the average was ten percent. You you leave those an increase, you may, you will be paying less taxes. So the same thing happens at the regional district because everything is based on assessed value. So overall, in all classes, our assessed values went up significantly more than Roslyn, Fruitvale, the other areas. So when we go into the services that we share with, that's how the costs are apportioned through assessed value. So with us taking on having higher assessed values, even though there was a decrease in some of the asks overall. And you will notice I did get General Man, I think, was down. A hundred thousand uh compared to what it was before. Um and uh because it was at five sixty nine, it was now at uh four seventy six. Some of the other ones as well, I think the fire protection um. Uh changed, uh well, sorry, was it also arts and culture? They actually dropped, there actually is a negative amount. So some of these other asks, if you looked at February twelfth overall ask compared to um what it was uh the twenty ninth. Uh it was the increase on uh the twenty ninth was three point seven million. And uh in twenty twenty or in February twelfth, it's a three point two eight six, so it took quite a number out of there. But because the city is now picking up a larger portion, even though um the amount dropped. The cities actually didn't see much of a difference between. The January ten twenty ninth and the February twelfth. You can see that right now, February twelfth, we're looking at. One million eight forty seven, well, basically, basically, one hundred, one million eight hundred forty seven thousand dollar increase, or thirty three percent. After um that meeting on the twel- on the twelfth, and we were looking at one million eight hundred eighty eight, so it was at thirty four percent. So. Um as much as the RDKB did have some, like I said, a good five hundred thousand dollar drop in what they're asked for for the requisition. Uh the city of trails did not have that same drop, only a forty four thousand dollar difference. Uh I know that there is ongoing discussions, uh certainly uh the uh in being involved on teams meeting for the budget. All directors were very concerned about what's happening there. Um certainly had some questions. Asked staff to go on and see if there's different ways to do this. Uh did not ask uh the budget, and so I believe there's another meeting coming up, I believe in this week. Have you heard of that?
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. So uh they'll have another another go, so it'll be interesting to see. Now that we at least know what the percentages are that we're carrying, that if they do have another drop, then we can see it um a drop on ours. But to be clear, the major driver here, as we've spoken up before, is the sewage treatment. That's making up a good eighty five percent of what our cost increase is. Uh it is. A one, not a one time, but they've kind of made that big jump uh one time, so you wouldn't be seeing that those kind of jumps ongoing. Um but it is there to be able to fund the additional. Cost of capital, both the principal and the interest that will need to be paid for the gap between when the original project for this huge treatment plant upgrade. Was budgeted for and received the grants for and then the on the significant increase in uh in. Uh building costs, saw a report that said that since twenty nineteen, the cost of construction has gone up seventy percent. So um we're feeling the effects of that, and it's a good project. We need to be able to have. Uh your pollution treated and uh and being able to. Be at a. At appropriate level before it's released back into the community. So on the January twenty ninth one for the uh sewer one, it was sixty paid by trail. It's sixty nine point uh three one percent for two point eight five million. Then you go back to February twelve. It goes from sixty nine point three one that we paid is sixty eight point eight zero, lots of numbers, sorry. But then it goes up, like the what we're paying goes up. Why does that, if the percentage goes down? So just make sure that we're both you and I are on the same page. So.
We're page two and three.
Okay, so if you were looking at February twelve, you're saying, hey, it's now one point five million or?
No, I'm on, yeah, well, I'm looking at the uh, I just was looking at the percentages, percentage of service paid by trail.
So the one thing, this is where kind of actually great point to point out is that you can see that um. On these numbers, they're very close to each other. So basically, the numbers that were being used in here were based on twenty twenty.
Hmm.
Um four's assessment, so twenty twenty four assessment, so he, when they, when they did the allocate, they didn't update it, so that if you go to twenty twenty. Five, you can see that now we're not paying sixty eight, we're paying sixty nine. By one six, so that's why even though some of these numbers drop. Um I hopefully it's not too confusing, but if you look at it in February twelve, we've got. The column in bold, twenty twenty five, and then to the left of it is that's the portion is paid by the the service paid by trail. And then if you go into twenty twenty four, you can see that, and that's where you're, yeah, you're seeing some of the the changes.
So what did they um cut out about the cultures and art? In order to get up into that negative?
Um I don't know how to talk my head, I think because the the dollar rounds were so small. Um but I could certainly uh find that out and and report on. Um, but I could certainly uh find that out and and report on it. Anyway, there's more work to be done. Certainly, like I said, the directors at the table are as concerned as um. As I think this council is as well, albeit. Not only three parties are dealing with the the Sushi plan. But even that, many of them are quite nervous about what they see as the escalation in some of the uh tax requisition costs in the budget. You will, it's fascinating, it's meaning on the general government to four hundred seventy six thousand dollars is is quite a bit of money. As just, that's just in one department, right? There's, there's certainly conversations about are we allocating out to the services correctly? Are we recovering on uh on general again? So again, very common uh conversations.
Are they adding staff? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, there certainly, there is some staff that is is part of that. The other part, I believe, is that they're trying to deal with the fact that in the past. Uh, there was a chipping away of the reserve out. So we've talked about this as well. It's much like me showing you. Hey, here's what's happening. If we spend all this capital, we don't have enough money in the capital reserve. So if you don't have that sort of ability to have years where you're less and it kind of grows, then that's what happens to you. All of a sudden get to a point where you're like, well, I guess we'll have to, um, we gotta increase it. And so that's just some of the conversations that I'm hearing from the staff.
Okay, so. Your, uh, to your uh question, are they adding staff? As part of the uh pushback is no, don't do that.
Okay.
Not over yet.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, if there's no questions or anything from Mr. McClellan, I guess we'll move on. Uh, do we, I receive those reports for information? Uh, do we have to?
No, we can just note that we had uh discussions about both of those.
Okay. So item number seven, uh, there is no other reports, I don't believe. Uh, question period. There's no, nobody for question period. So I need a resolution to rise from the committee of pool. Over Nisa, Council Benson, Council Butler, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, resolution to exclude public access to the public meeting until six. Uh, o'clock P M and immediately reconvene or immediately convene into a closed session. The resolution is that pursuant to section ninety of the community charter, the public be excluded from this portion of the meeting. As the subject matter being considered relates to the following. The community charter section ninety one E, community charter section ninety one G. And the community charter section ninety one L. And further that the public portion of the meeting be recessed until six o'clock P M. And further that council immediately resolve into the closed portion of the meeting. And I need a mover, Council Benson and a seconder, Council Council, all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you.